Ready? I'd like to call to order the May 3, 2022 Town of McCandless Planning Commission Meeting. We have, the first item on the agenda is a presentation by Michael Baker International on the zoning and saldo modernization project that has been kicked off here in McCandless. So I think we have somebody online and we're ready to wait.
Yes, Chris, if you can just hit the, there you go. Hey Carolyn, thank you for joining us remotely and soldiering through your shoulder incident there. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. I was, I was sorry that this happened when it did. It's interfered with a couple meetings, but fortunately I'm in a position now where I'm at least able to attend virtually as opposed to not being able to even do that. So, thank you.
Are you right-handed or left-handed?
I am right-handed, so this has been an experience. So, everything takes me about like two or three times as long, except for speaking. Speaking, I can still do at my normal pace.
So, just for a little bit of background for the group, Carolyn is our primary code writer on the project. Consummate zoning nerd, I believe is a solid description for you, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's pretty good.
Um, so yeah, she's been a terrific resource so far through the project. And I figured that, you know, she can just present whatever she's got and then we hit her with, you know, Q and A and go from there.
I think the floor is yours.
Okay, great. And do I have the permission to share a screen?
I can make that happen.
Yeah, okay, great. Let's see, share. Screen. Oh. Let's see, sorry, I'm having a little bit of technical difficulty on my end. Michael Baker has a lot of in his security. He will not be in. So, I think maybe I have fixed the issue on my end and can now share a screen.
If you, if you have an issue with actually pulling it up, just send me whatever you've got. And yeah, we can see, there we go.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, we can, we can see the whole thing. In case, but yeah, if you, if you run into a problem, you can send me the PDF and I can share a screen for you if you need me to.
Okay. Oh, this is actually showing both monitors.
Um, I only saw one when the desktop came up.
Oh, okay, you only see one set of slides?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Then I'm not going to mess anymore with what's going on on my end. All right, well, I can thank you for this opportunity to, to speak to you today. I've prepared a few slides, just kind of give you an overview of, of the zoning code and subdivision land development ordinance rewrite that we are working on with your, with your town. Give you, I'll give you a overview of the project. A summary of the primary tasks that we have identified for this project and where we are in each of those. And at the end, I'm willing to take any and all questions that you feel like throwing my way. So in case you haven't met us all yet, this is the team from Michael Baker, who is the primary, primary people on this project. Kirsten Campatello is our project manager. As RJ said, I am the zoning technical expert on this project. Hannah Clark is our public engagement specialist. Peter Quintinella is the form-based code and place-making specialist. See Troy is our zoning advisor. Ryan Rhodes is our civil engineer and primary subdivision land development ordinance expert. And Morgan is our GIS and data visualization. So the scope of this project is to modernize the zoning code and subdivision land development ordinance for the Town of McCandless. The goals that we have in doing this project is to make sure that your code and your, your maps and associated data are searchable and maintainable through the GIS-based interactive zoning map and also through the text that's on Ecode 360 for your, for your town. We are creating a clear and concise set of ordinances. They are graphically based and are also using language that is a little more clear and put together than you often find in, in codes and, and similar ordinances. We are also looking to make sure that they are flexible and internally consistent. Between the two ordinances, there are a lot of things that overlap. So we want to make sure that in those cases, one code isn't contradicting another one. And through these changes, your zoning and saldo will be ready to guide the growth that you as a community wish to see and wish to allow in your community. For the schedule, we've divided it up into five tasks. First task is the project management and coordination, which will go throughout the project. It is a 12-month project from beginning to end. The due diligence period was our initial dive into the ordinances and the plans that the community already has in place, such as your comprehensive plan and the next transit, which is the community-wide, sorry, county-wide, but also will impact McCandless. And that due diligence was about a two-month process. It set the stage for our initial assessment of, of the needs for this project. Task three is divided into two components. There's the evaluation of the existing neighborhoods, corridors, overlays and zoning districts. And then there's also the, the zoning ordinance rewrite itself, along with the enactment of the new ordinance. Task four is the subdivision and land development ordinance rewrite and enactment. And task five is the public outreach and engagement. As you can see in the chart on the right, all of these tasks are overlapping throughout the pro, throughout the 12-month process for this project.
And I want to jump in and let everyone know what we've got there is the schedule that when we signed the contract after town council approved it, that we were planning to kick things off in December. However, you know, holidays, we pushed it into January and then I had a little family COVID adventure. So when we actually ended up kicking off the project was towards the end of January, beginning of February. So with those date headers up at the top, just bump them forward two months and they're more accurate to what we ended up with. Sorry to interrupt, just want to let everyone know.
No, thank you, RJ. That was, that was perfect. So again, in, in the task for the, the due diligence, which was in the first couple of months of this project, some of the, the things that we identified that are current limitations with your ordinances are the high number of disparate zoning districts that are currently in the code and the segregation of uses within those districts. This is definitely based on the best practices of the 1970s and zoning. But in the world that we live in today, it just makes it very difficult to administrate and tends not to support the kind of mixed-use community that was described in the McCandless Conversation, Your Comprehensive Plan. In addition, the required lot sizes and setbacks limit the housing options that you can do underneath the current ordinance and the practical feasibility of multifamily or mixed-use option. Parking maximums are high in a lot of cases. And then throughout both codes, there's confusing and conflicting provisions. So again, our goal is to, to address all of these in our, in our rewrite. Again, in the due diligence, we also looked at your comprehensive plan and other plans and documents that, that your community has put together or has been part of in larger community efforts. And so taking a look at the comprehensive plan, the goals of that plan are for active transportation and connectivity, community activities, green space and sustainability, redevelopment, community identity and public engagement. And zoning and the subdivision land development ordinance can help these, support these goals in a variety of ways. Through density and setback, standards, through setbacks and form-based code that improve the pedestrian realm by allowing for a more varied housing options, by allowing for a mix of uses that support a walkable multimodal community, by reducing the prominence of parking lots and encouraging sustainable and green practices in building and site design. So the next tasks that we are working on are tasks 3A and 3B. So 3A is the valuation of the zoning districts. As we are going through this process, which we are currently in the middle of, we are asking questions such as where are the neighborhoods? Do they have different characters? Are there centers to McCandless? And what are the changes that the community wants to see in these types of areas? So on the right is our initial assessment based on walking tours and conversations with the town and the task force. This is a, a draft concept of, of what we're thinking about. We are continuing to evolve and, and edit this as we get more feedback through our public engagement process. But generally speaking, in this diagram, the darker the color, the denser and more intense the uses that we see for these areas. So that includes McCandless Crossing and the flats up by Wexford, as sort of the, the nodes and the, the, the town centers. And then rating, radiating out from those are moderate and lower-density community centers and corridors. Simultaneously, we are in the process of working on the zoning code rewrite. This diagram is our initial assessment of how we're going to take the current organization of the zoning code and reorganize it in the, in the new ordinance. In the existing code, there's a lot of provisions scattered throughout the numerous articles that are there and the, the placement of those provisions isn't always logical and easy to follow or easy to administer. So we're taking a, a new approach to combine, you know, anything that's a general provision that covers, you know, how, what the administrative side of things is, such as the planning commission and the zoning board and the zoning officer, what their roles are, what kinds of permits are required, you know, general purpose and intent of the zoning code and how to use it are all going to be relocated into that first article. Then we will take a, a second article to go through all of the, the new zoning districts. And again, based on our initial assessment, the number of existing districts is, is a lot. So we anticipate that there will be fewer zoning districts than there currently are. And they will be reorganized and renamed based on the, the final findings for our evaluation of the zoning districts in 3A. The next section is going to focus on the uses that are permitted in the zoning code. After that is the supplemental regulations, which is sort of a catch-all article. So that's where parking will be located. Landscaping will be in there and any other zoning regulations that are not tied specifically to the user, specifically to a single district will end up in this section. Currently, there's, there's an article called the District Common Standards, which is a very similar approach to, to what we're, what we're aiming for in this article. Signs are always complicated, so they get their own section just because they need their own space to, to get through all the, the nuances that are involved in signs. And then our final section is going to be the definitions, which again is another area that currently definitions are scattered throughout the code. So we're going to pull them all into a single place so that you know where to go when you're looking for a definition in the code.
But if, if I may, I'll say that, that this piece, although, you know, the arrows are kind of going all over and there's a lot of different text on there. And it looks like, you know, wow, we're condensing this to only seven articles. But of course, all these things will break down into subsections that are a lot easier to follow. You know, sometimes I compare the current code a bit to choose your own adventure novel. In that, when I first started here, there was like a whole list that I had written out for myself, like, okay, check, you know, district common standards first. And if you don't find it in there, go to the chapter for the district. And if it's not there, try the non-conforming uses. And you know, it's like a six-item list. And if it was that complicated for me as an administrator to come in and work with, what must it be like for somebody that's just trying to figure out, can I put a fence in my backyard? So I think especially just the organization of the code is going to be such a key piece for it being more accessible to the public. So I'm really excited to see what comes out of this part, especially.
Thank you. Yeah. So in addition to identifying this initial reorganization, we have started work on the general provisions section itself and on the definitions. RJ and I have actually gone back and forth a couple of times now on the general zoning provisions, just to make sure that we are capturing everything. You know, again, after pulling from all the various sections that these types of regulations currently live, we actually identified that there are a couple of gaps, just in the way that it was organized, things got overlooked. So RJ's been very helpful to help fill in those gaps so that we can make sure that things are clear and straightforward from the beginning. Task four is the subdivision and land development ordinance rewrite. This, we're still in the very early stages of, in our general process, we'd like to, to get a good solid start on the zoning code and the zoning districts before we get too far in the subdivision land development ordinance. And also in the, the current division that you have between your zoning and your saldo. The saldo is a much, much smaller ordinance to begin with. So it's going to get the same amount of scrutiny and same amount of attention. It's just going to take less time to, to get through and to, to make. And our task five is the public engagement. There are many facets to public engagement that we are providing in this project. We've launched the website on McCandless and me. And we are.
Hear that noise? I'm so sorry. The heavens have opened up and dumped quite a bit of water on this building. So. Please continue, but if you hear the rain, don't worry. I think we're fine.
If the screen goes black, then I know that something happened, but being panicked by the noise. So we, we've started on McCandless and me with some blog posts to just provide some sort of bite-sized, digestible pieces of information about this project for the public so they can follow along and see, see where we are in the process, understand what's going on. We also have the, the mapping feature available for the public to provide input. And on this feature, there are pins where you can identify through the three different colors, green pin, blue pin and yellow pin. The areas that you wish to preserve, the areas where you would like to see improvements within the existing character and the areas that you want to see some transformative or significant change to the existing environment. When you place a pin, you also have the option of adding on specific comments. And we are also.
About 50 pins already, so that's pretty. Yeah, yeah, this is, I assume this is a screenshot from the beginning of the project. But now when you zoom in, they, like, they kind of cluster until you zoom in more and you can really see them all break out and like the focus areas that people have been pinning already. In fact, Greg, I think you placed one.
Yeah.
Yourself. Yeah, I was really happy to see that. So.
Rich Evan.
Yeah, yeah.
Mark, Rich Mark, Rich Mark.
Yes, yeah. So, you know, everybody stop by, check out the pins, leave some of your own. It's, it's getting rolling pretty good already. So, yeah.
Excellent. Yeah, I didn't think to, to get a, a recent snapshot to, to update this slide with, but that's very exciting to hear. Thank you, RJ. And then the, the next piece of our public engagement that we are in the process of, of, I think we just finalized the announcement forms this week, is going to be our first public engagement workshop. And so that's going to be on June 23 from 4 to 8 in, in the room that you all currently are in. And the, the workshop is going to be a series of stations so that the, the public can, and the community can come whenever fits within their schedule. So it's not one of the events where you have to come from the very beginning and stay through the whole thing to understand what's going on. It's going to be a much more flexible workshop. We will have stations on what is zoning, providing an overview of the purpose and impact of zoning code regulations. There'll be a station on the current and future zoning districts, which will include the, the current rendition that we will have of our evaluation and our post-new districts. We'll also have a station with, that'll include some definitions and uses that we are working on developing for the code. There will be a station on the community visions and how those will play into the code. We will have a presentation to engage with the community. And, and then there will be the mapping exercise similar to the one that we are providing on the website. So if anybody is more comfortable doing that in person as opposed to digitally, they will also have the opportunity to provide their, their comments. Leave, that is the end of the slides that I've prepared. And so if anybody has any questions about the project or where we are and what's going on, I'm happy to take those.
I think we probably do. I don't know where to begin. Does anybody want to start? We, we, we had a meeting a month ago and we had a rather lengthy discussion about where all of this process was. And we, after discussing it for, I don't know, lengthy time, 35, 40, 45 minutes, we decided to just kind of table our discussion until your presentation was given so that we would have a better understanding of what this group is doing, what this team is doing, the interaction and interplay between your team and the planning commission. And I think that was the nature of our discussion. And so I suspect that there will be some questions and I'm opening it to anybody who wants to start with that series of questions. I've got some too, but I'll wait until anybody else wants to speak. Anything?
Well, I noticed that in 2002, the MPC Municipalities Plan Code added no-impact home-based businesses. Yet we also have home occupations. I, I really don't see any, I, I see some verbal definitions that are different, but I really don't see any. Is it really necessary to have both of them? I know we have to have the no-impact home-based businesses, but do we have, have to have now the home occupations?
Um, my, my interpretation of that is that we, we would pick one of those phrases to use, whether it's the, the one from the MPC or the home occupation and use that, that section and those provisions to cover the requirements that MPC has in addition to any other home occupations that, that your community is interested in making sure are, are available.
Yeah, like, like Susquehanna, Susquehanna, which RJ gave us the text for. And their draft analysis, they use, they, they seem to be using both of those. And I really thought that was maybe unnecessary, but I just wanted, what was, get your thoughts?
Yeah, I, I haven't looked at that portion of the Susquehanna code yet. That, so I, I can't speak to specifically why both terms would be used. A little bit more about my background, I, I did work in the City of Pittsburgh zoning office for four and a half years, applying Pittsburgh zoning code to projects. So I'm very, very familiar with, with the experience of trying to administer less-than-straightforward language. So my, my approach is if there are words that are very similar that mean essentially the same thing, but are being used interchangeably to switch that up and just pick one of the two and use that consistently throughout the code to make it easier on the administrators as well as the community that's trying to understand the regulations.
It seems like the logical one to pick would be no-impact home-based businesses since MPC is the one that, yeah. Are your offices on Grant Street? Are you working out of the Grant Street office?
Um, yes, I, we're, we're currently hybrid. So we're working partly from home and partly from the office, but when we, when we are in the office, we are in the Grand Street.
Okay, that's fun. It's a nice floor.
It is, yes. Got some great views too.
Let me ask about the, the interaction between the planning commission and your team. That was the nature of the discussion that we had a month ago. And I guess my question to you is, what meetings have you had among your team and the McCandless group? It had several names and I don't know what to call it anymore. Task force, okay. What is the, what, what meetings have you had? And what is your intention or your understanding of the task force and the planning commission and how we are going to interact going forward throughout this process?
Um, sure. I, I, with the, the task force, we've had two meetings so far. And the, the approach with that is, is to have, to have some feedback on, you know, as we're, we're off, you know, coming up with our ideas and you know, the, the district evaluation was the, the most recent thing that we shared with them. It's sort of like a, they're, they're helping us to gauge the community's interests and, and what the community is interested in for the zoning code. So when we took our initial district evaluation to the task force, we got some really great feedback that, you know, there were a couple of areas where we're probably way off in our initial assessment. So we're, we're adjusting those based on that.
And where is that type of feedback reported, for example? I mean, you said you've got some that you might have been way off on. How do we, as the planning commission, know what feedback you got? How do we know whether we agree with the feedback you got? How do we know whether we would have added something different? I'm, I'm trying to understand that interaction and that relationship.
Um, sure. Sorry. The, I would say that we, we welcome, we welcome all, all feedback. And.
How do we give it to you if we're not, if we cannot participate in your meetings?
So the, the, the task force is, is what was set up as, as part of the, the, the project through the RFP process and the selection process. I, I will say that I, I was not a part of the team at that time. So I'm, I'm a little less familiar with, with how that got set up. I, you know, we're, we're here today to have a conversation with you and, and to get your feedback and understand where, where you are. And we're certainly willing to have a conversation if, if more is needed to interact with the commission.
It would seem to be me, on, on the June 23 meeting, that we would have interaction with you then. But maybe so to, to see the definitions you came up with. But maybe we, we would have, have to have time to study those definitions in order to, and maybe make additions or adjustments to those definitions. And I wondered where that, we could see them on 23rd, but I wonder where, where the timeframe would, would have, would be that we could make, sit, sit back and talk among ourselves, the planning commission, and then come back with you again with a definition, definition changes or maybe that are.
Yes. Yeah, I think, I think I better understand the, the question now. We are with, with the task force, we're, we're getting general feedback. But the actual, like the actual text of the code, like when we have draft sections, that, that will be. that will be the planning commission that will be reviewing and providing comment on, on those. Like the specific ordinance provisions.
Like this, and then this, we would have interaction with you before the twenty-third, or is that what you're saying, or?
Um, no, so that, the, not necessarily. So the, the twenty-third meeting, the definitions that we're, we're presenting there, again, those are like a very first draft to get um, initial feedback from, from you as planning commission members and from the community as well. Um, and we will take that feedback back and um, incorporate it into the, the draft definitions section. But when we have a completed draft definitions, um, we will be sharing that with, with the commission. Um, so that you will have time to review and
To, to make other changes, are you?
Yes.
Okay. And, and what about just concepts that we want to see uh, in the new zoning codes? And I, I, I'm just going to throw out concepts and, but affordable housing. Inclusionary zones, things of that nature. Are we, are we considering that? Should we just assume it's being considered? Things like uh, how we're, we're trying to make sure that one of the most attractive things about our community, which is the excellent schools that we have. Uh, how do we make sure that all of our new zoning takes advantage of that or further enhances that or does something that makes people want to move here even more so? Do we have interaction with the schools and the school zoning, or not the school zoning, but the, the school administrations? I don't know if they're part of this discussion. Overall mass transit, have we talked with uh, the city of Pittsburgh? Trying to make sure that they would extend a, a light rail system out our way. I mean, th- these are concepts that I don't want to wait until halfway through this program, June twenty-third or whatever it is, uh, to even see whether or not it's been considered. And I'm sure others have other ideas too, but these are just things that pop off the top of my head that I want to make sure are being considered and considered in depth. And therefore, it's difficult to make sure we s- we get involved if we're not involved. And so far, we're not involved. And I, if you can't tell from my comments, I, I don't know that we're entirely happy with that not involved.
Yes, so I mean, to, to speak to the, to the um, the concepts that you've thrown out, all of those are absolutely on the table. Um, and, and I will add that, that RJ is, is our primary um, resource and our primary person that we're going back and forth with. Um, and we, we have had several conversations about um, affordable housing. Um, what does that mean for McCandless? Uh, we've, we've talked about ADUs and what does that mean for McCandless? Um, RJ has shared with us a um, uh, an email conversation specifically about the affordable dwelling units. Um, and some of the concerns about how that plays into stormwater management um, and other, other prominent issues in McCandless. Um, so we are definitely taking all that into consideration. You know, a, a lot of these things are also discussed in the comprehensive code or comprehensive plan. And we are, if it's in the, the comprehensive plan, we are definitely looking for ways to make sure that we can include that in the zoning code and in the subdivision land development ordinance. Um, and definitely the transit is, is a very big concern. Um, our, our team was heavily involved in the next transit plan for the Allegheny County. And so we have uh, several in-house experts on, on that plan. And the, the goals and intents for the bus lines through McCandless. And so we're going to make sure that the zoning code is in alignment with, with the projected transportation improvements on the Port Authority side.
Yeah, honestly, I mean, that was part during the selection process. The fact that they were the primary on the next transit plan that the Port Authority did was something that was a big plus. Um, because they're going to be more familiar with that than really anybody else could have been when it comes to the planning consultant side.
Uh, again, at our last meeting, there was lengthy discussion about whether the planning commission should or could be part of some of your meetings, other than the the public meetings, which is the January twenty-third meeting, and then the next one, which is December or January of next year, or something like that. And, and so the, the question was left open because we were going to wait for your presentation today. And we, we did not resolve, there were some, there was some comment that we would like to be involved. There was some comment that we would not be permitted to be involved. Wanting to keep your little group small, concise, easier to control, understand all those rea- reasons and rationales. Uh, so the question on the table is, is the planning commission or members of the planning commission, other than Shelley, who is on your team? Uh, Shelley Smonholdt, uh, are they, can they participate in some of these meetings uh, in order to have a better understanding of what's going on, since it is our primary responsibility as the planning commission to do this in the first place? You are essentially a subgroup of the, it, it has been thi- this whole effort, which, which resides with the planning commission, was given to a subgroup to do. And you are that subgroup, and I suspect you know that. So uh, our question is, what is our involvement? Are we, are we out of it? Can we be a participant in it?
I, I, I think that um, again, with the, with the initial structure, um, the the planning commission is always involved in the process, again, because you are the deciding body. The, the task force was, was set up as, as a separate, um, a separate um, sort of brainstorming area. We are certainly open and welcome to including um, the planning commission more in the process, if, if that is um, the desire of the commission. How that would actually play out. I, I don't feel that I can say yes or no um, to any specific process, not being the project manager. So I, I would defer that to Kirsten Campatello, who was unable to attend tonight to, to a conflicting meeting. Um, but I will certainly take this back to her and say that there, um, that there is interest in the planning commission being more involved. And uh, we, we can work on figuring out what's what, what is the most appropriate uh, path for doing that? Um, again, as you mentioned, the, the task force is a small group, um, adding you know, if we, if we double the size of the task force, it makes it harder to get anything done in, in the meetings. But there, there are certainly many options for how we could engage with the planning commission more throughout the, the remainder of the process.
So you will take that back to the project manager and then let us know what you think makes sense and we'll let you know whether we think that makes sense.
Yes.
Because I don't think this is a one-way decision, candidly.
Absolutely, right, right. It, it needs to be a conversation. Um, I just, again, not being the project manager, I don't feel um, that I have the, the, the best knowledge on this area in order to have the conversation with you tonight.
Okay, and, and your meetings with this planning uh, task force, rather, are roughly monthly?
Uh, no, we meet every other month.
Every other month, okay. So there's really only going to be one more potentially between now and the open June twenty-third meeting.
Correct.
Okay. Those are my questions. Any others from the group?
Is there anyone involved with interaction with neighboring municipalities to get consistency across municipal borders for land uses?
That's a really great question. I would say unfortunately, in general, that um, there's not enough of that. I mean, we as the consultants, we would be open um, to, to making sure like we've, in conversations with RJ, we've talked about particularly the um, I'm blanking now, is it, is it Pine Township that's immediately to the north?
Yeah, you're thinking of the flats area, huh?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Like, we, we've had some, several conversations on, on how particularly because that road is just, is such a major throughway. You know, how can we make the zoning in McCandless so that it's, it's going to have a seamless flow into Pine Township across that border? So I know that is one area in particular that we are looking at um, for your community.
Section that that would matter in is McIntyre Square. Um, so the existing C four district, from what I understand, was done. I don't know if it was exactly in concert or like, you know, it was probably twenty, well, I don't know, it might have even been all the way back when we put the structure in place. But point being, that particular development is split between us and Ross. Um, so there needs to be some level of consistency in what you can do there. But um, when it comes to looking, you know, to the east and west, it's just a whole bunch of residential, to be honest. So, you know, and I'm, I'm not expecting, at least from the early pass, that any of that is going to be up for changing the character of it, you know, which already blends pretty well in general. But that said, you know, the forms of code that Carolyn presented on earlier, which well, it's called form-based code, but you know, um, an approach that is a little more focused on bulk and how things fit on the lot rather than precise use. As far as I know, that's not an approach that the neighboring municipalities have popped onto yet. So, you know, there's going to be some level of difference in that, just the way that their code functions is going to work differently after this.
Yeah, Brendan, uh, Franklin Park uh, approached us, I, I think, think they approached us, what, uh, that with, we, we, with regard to fracking. They wanted to do some uh, you know, cross uh, border uh, stuff, and, but I, I never saw anything that came with it. There, you know, we, we have some things with, we just take roads, certain roads, and you go right into Franklin Park, so from McCandless.
Anything else, Brendan?
That was it, thank you.
Shelley, anything?
No, I think that we explained, as um, Carolyn said, our last meeting was um, it was brainstorming, focus groupish, not talking about um, uh, specifics of code writing and definitions or anything of that nature. And I, I, I do agree with you, Dan, that um, that component of a modernization plan, the planning commission, you know, will and should be you know, involved in. I just, like I said last time, the task force issue, I mean, it's, is a focus, in my mind, is a focus group. It's just a, a bunch of people who have read the comprehensive plan, which was our guiding like supposed to be our guiding light into the future and looking at things from a quite a high level, to be honest. And I, I think the hard work is um, just getting ready to start in terms of really being able to, the planning commission, the council um, to be looking at the outcomes of draft propositions.
And I mean, I think that that's a, a really good point, you know. It all goes back to the comprehensive plan. And that was something that was, you know, managed between Bruce and the planning commission, you know, at the time, and, and I guess a steering committee or whatever they called it at that time, not a task force. But, but point being, you know, the, the base level stuff and focus group stuff came up through the steering committee. Very similar to this meeting, they did sort of due diligence phase one, like this is what's going on. And then, as far as I understand, because then I wasn't here, but you know, it worked through the process where the planning commission had an opportunity to really get those key issues and concerns. Like, those are memorialized in that document, and that was the foundation that Michael Baker started with. So, anything that made it into there is on the radar and will be going forward.
If we have something that we want to make sure is clearly on the radar, and we don't know whether it is, what's the best method to convey that to your group?
Um, I mean, RJ is our, is our main point of contact. Um, so if you, if you share it with her, um, she will send it on to us and we'll make sure to to add that into our, our, our bucket.
Just as a follow-up, uh, that issue of the schools and the, the, the high quality of our school system. What is your group doing in that regard? To, anything at all, uh, to make sure that the zoning enhances people who want to move here because of our schools?
Yeah, that's, that's something that's, that's come up several times in our conversation with RJ and the task force, that, um, that McCandless has a really excellent school system. Um, but that the, the housing options currently available are um, are perhaps preventing uh, some families from being able to come into the neighborhood and, and partake of that, that school district. Um, so that is definitely something that we are keeping in mind, especially as we're looking at the residential components um, of trying to figure out how we can encourage um, a greater variety of housing types that would allow um, some young families to, to come to the community and, and be able to use the schools.
And of course, that fits right into the affordable housing issue.
Absolutely.
And I can also share, aside from, you know, just what the consultants are doing, working on this issue in general, I've been in contact with Bill Kirk, he was a previous council member. He took um, the position with the school district, and so he's very familiar with you know, kind of what they're doing, where they're going in the future, maybe what their plans are for different facilities and things like that. So I've made sure to stay in contact with him throughout, you know, preparing the project to make sure that we don't accidentally zone something that's directly in conflict with any other plans for the future. So they're definitely looked in on that.
Good.
Or I guess by extension, interacting with the school district, on school facilities, feeder plans. So we don't zone something for high intensity residential for a school that you literally can't expand in other areas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not that there's a whole heck of a lot of room to do that.
Right, right. Yeah, that's, that's exactly why, why we're looping in um, this little district.
Good. Jonathan, anything from you?
I think you kind of summed up the, the big concern as I'm, you know, the, the code that we're looking to, to amend. You turn the page, the first page on there is that the role of the planning commission shall prepare and administer, prepare and present, right, not react to drafts, you know, not provide guidance once things have already been formulated or calculated or, or drafted, so. What I was just wanting, wanting to see is that your vision on interacting with the planning commission, so we're aware of the directions things are, and we have that availability, we have, you know, we're able to provide input on, on, on that direction, so. I could think I saw some, some question marks about how, where we're able to access those meetings, other than ask RJ, send her an email, you know.
Well, we're going to hear back from the, the project manager, so hopefully not too distant future.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll talk to Kirsten tomorrow, let her know that this, this is a big concern and that we need to um, come back with, with some options for how we can essentially bump up the engagement with the planning commission.
Good, thank you. Greg, anything more? One second, sir.
Oh, I was going to just say, uh, I, I, I mean, the younger guys, they probably have families that go there without any like Sean and, and, you know, maybe you guys, if I could just sit on, sit on, in on these things to give them, give the task force some of their thoughts, because I have a feeling that your task force does not have any younger people with the kids. And maybe have them give some ideas.
Kim, anything?
Yeah, thank you.
Sean?
No, no questions. I, I echo the kind of the, the comments and questions that Dan and Jonathan presented, and I, I guess I would, I would encourage um, Michael Baker to provide drafts um, as, as early as possible for, for us to, as, as planning commission to review and look at, even if it's individual components within um, sections. Um, I think earlier we can see materials and review them as, as the commission um, would, would, would help make the, the entire process more efficient. Prevent rework on your end, um, prevent headaches on our end. So um, you know, at, at the same time, I understand there is a, you know, from PM perspective, the project has been mapped out thoughtfully, and I understand, you know, if, why it is mapped out the way it is. So I don't want to throw wrenches in it to the extent that we can still provide input as community members, um, with how everything is set up now. But at the same time, seeing, seeing drafts, seeing components as early as possible in the process is, is, I think, helpful.
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense. Um, and I, I don't think I mentioned um, yet tonight, but it is not our intent to wait until we have a complete draft of the entire it is not our intent to wait until we have a complete draft of the entire code before handing it to you. That doesn't help anybody for sure. So the intent is that, once we have a section in a complete first draft, that's the point at which we would share, we wouldn't hold on to the draft of one section to wait for the rest of the code before sharing. But again, the, the finer details about how we can engage with you further. We'll talk with Kirsten and, and come up with a, a more detailed strategy for that.
Thank you. Anything else?
Is it worthwhile to put a new item on the agenda at the end? For adjournment? For planning, yeah, for planning, just planning commission discussion about what we want to do.
Well, I'd originally thought that we would actually, once we heard what our involvement was going to be, this was at the last monthly meeting. If you remember, there was a, an agenda item for a vote to, for the planning commission to give their opinion by, by way of a vote, as to whether we thought that the process and procedure and interaction was something that we found acceptable. Is that what you're talking about for tonight?
It might be more nuanced than an up or down, it might be more generalized discussion of what the planning commission's role might be as we see it to speak with one voice versus as writing different people with their own views of how we see the community.
We can certainly do that right before we adjourn.
I, I, just so we know procedurally, when we get there, unfortunately, we're going to have to just take a vote to add the items to the agenda. I misinterpreted the horse is not dead yet, but it is whimpering comment at the last meeting is we have beaten the horse quite a bit and that we were wrapping up the agenda item discussion. So I did not add a specific motion to vote to this month's agenda. However, the planning commission can vote to add any motion that they desire to the agenda with majority vote. And then we will republish it tomorrow for the new session.
I could, I can go sit out there and do it as general public comment.
That's okay, I mean, it's like, it's, it's a procedure that is now legally enshrined in PA law. It's just that it's new for this year, so before you just vote on whatever you want it as it came up. Now we've got to vote to put it on the agenda and then vote on the thing. So, when we get there, we can do that.
Okay, we'll deal with that at the end. Okay, I'm, I'm finished.
No, I think there was someone.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir. I don't see why not.
My name is Jeff Juszczyk, I live at 10090 Eiffel Drive in Wexford. Thank you Carolyn for a very lucid and helpful presentation and to planning board, thank you RJ. As a homeowner and a resident who has kids who have just recently left the school district for college. This is all very topical and as someone who's come to previous meetings myself and heard about the future plans is, I think is vital work to be done. I, I think agree with you as a committee that if the baby is lost in bathwater in the translation of words from a book to words that are software. Yeah, something bad could happen, but I do think from what Carolyn has told us that you will, people will be involved in iterations. Carolyn, is it, I mean, come the end of your project, November, January, whatever it is, will this tool be amenable, adaptable, changeable?
Yes, zoning codes are living documents. You know, we, as consultants, we do our best to give you the best zoning code in the moment, but things change. In the last five, 10 years, examples of that are fracking, medical marijuana, things change. So, yes, the, the code can always be amended and adopted.
And as everything is cleaned up in the current code, it will make it more efficient for people like RJ and everyone to access. And I have myself gone to look through ordinances and it's complicated.
We've had many a conversation, I think.
I want to thank you for your work and I hope it will come all together, thank you.
Thank you. Are we finished with the first item on the agenda? Carolyn, does that finish your work? I suspect you can leave us.
Excellent, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you today and I look forward to continuing the conversation.
Thank you. Item number two is the review and recommendation of the Blazer Drive subdivision plan number four, lot line revision. Is there any presentation regarding that lot line revision?
There's probably not a presentation, but I've got Jerry on the Zoom here, so I just sent him. I don't know if he's going to start his video, but he's on mic if we need him.
If you would just remind us what we're revising.
I would, yeah, that's what I was about to go into anyway. So, if you all recall, when the Phase Two McCandless Square Plan came through, they were going to do a couple of different subdivision lines, you know, to chop off the portion that eventually became the townhomes. At this point, they now have, I believe, a daycare or some sort of childcare, you know, drop off facility. And that business typically owns their property rather than rents, I believe, is what Kevin Dougherty told me. So, at that time, they did not have that nailed down. They didn't know that they needed to chop off the particular portion of the property that I think is on the far east side of Phase Two. So that it would be a separate parcel that could be owned by the childcare facility. So essentially, they're just coming back with this lot line revision application to tweak what they did at the time of the Phase Two approval and isolate that parcel so that it can be individually owned. Jerry, did I get that right?
That just about sums it up.
Look at that.
And once this subdivision occurs, the childcare center is, is already willing, ready, willing and able to buy it?
Uh, yeah, I, actually Dan Quaring is on the phone, on the line as well. He is with Warhorse Ventures and they're the ones that are leading up the, the charge here with the learning experience. And I know they've been in discussions, you know, swapping contracts back and forth with Kevin, Kevin Dougherty. So, Dan, I mean, if you want to chime in and speak to how you're able to move forward on this.
Jerry, this is actually Eric Carr. I'm the president of Warhorse Venture Partners, I appreciate you all having us this evening and, and voting on this, this lot line revision. There were just some minor things that we needed to make sure that the lot was in a position where not only we could purchase it, but also develop it for the tenant and have it in a, in a, in an organized fashion for what our plans are for the future. So, it's, we're under contract with Mr. Dougherty now. And our intent is, once this lot line is, is drafted and recorded, that we'll move forward with the purchase and the development of the property.
Any issues, does engineering have any issues?
There were just some minor comments with respect to reciprocal easements between the properties. And I would just offer that if you did approve, consider approving the plan tonight to, to base upon by April 26, 2022.
I, I think we got a copy of that reciprocal agreement from Mike Hudeck, who is the Continental guy from Phase One. So we have evidence of that one confirmed.
I'm sorry, Dan, what was the date of that letter?
April 26, 2022.
Okay, thank you.
RJ, did you receive the two letters as well?
Yeah, so Jerry, Jerry sent over this afternoon a response to Dan's comments essentially. So we have a plan that, you know, Gateway has not had the opportunity to go through and issue a new comment letter on yet. But just making a couple of those formatting tweaks that they had requested. So assuming that those are all taken care of, everything should be in good order. They've gotten till the end of May, I think May 23rd would be the council meeting that this would move on to if it continued on here.
Okay.
What is the nature of the reciprocal leasing agreement, does it cover cross parking, access, storm water, utilities? So it's, it's a full, so in essence, they would like to own their, their parcel, but they're still very much, it's not really changing anything in terms of how the development will be developed, everything will be coordinated and, and treated as if it were one parcel, but this way they can own it.
Yes. Okay. Well, it sounds rather administrative in nature. So, can I get a motion to recommend the town, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, is there a public comment regarding this? Doesn't sound like it online, anything? No.
Everybody that's on is open.
Okay, then, can I get a motion to recommend town council approve the Blazer Drive subdivision, lot line revision, subject to Gateway, April 26, 2022, letter?
Simone.
So. Greg and Sean second. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you all, thank you all very much for your time, have a good evening. Item number three on the agenda, the Ridge Preliminary Subdivision Land Development Plan. This is a continued review.
Steve, I know you were going to ask me to pull up the PowerPoint, so I'm doing that now. Just downloading very, very slowly.
It was rather large.
Yeah, usually not that bad, but maybe we have a little bit of weather wifi.
Hey, good evening, Stephen Victor, Victor Retschel Associates. When we were here last month, my takeaway of it, that there were two items that were of significant importance, I think we've tried to address those and wanted to just focus on presenting those this evening. The next slide, for those who were not here, we'll just give somebody out a general indication of where the property is. The subject area is outlined in red. North for all the drawings is to the right. And what we have is on the easterly side, the bottom side is Route 19. And to the south end of the property, the left hand side is Sarver Lane. Next slide. Last month, we presented this plan in which we talked about a 19 lot, single family subdivision. And the two significant, significant points that we saw was that the discussion of a sidewalk along Route 19. And not necessarily an item brought up by you, but brought up by one of the neighbors regarding storm water. So I wanted to focus also on storm water. Next slide. We still have 19 single family lots, but what we have done is we have delineated a sidewalk along Perry Highway. We went back in and did the study on that and it will require us to build some retaining walls. But they're short, approximately a two foot high retaining wall along about half of the sidewalk area. In the original plan, we had the PennDOT right of way. And then we dedicated an additional 10 feet of some of the berm area and shoulder area to McCandless. The reason for that is that PennDOT does not like to take any more right of way, so you can't dedicate right of way to PennDOT. But just as common practice, we had dedicated that. We've had second thoughts on that and so the plan you will see here amends that, we do not want to dedicate it to you, but we would like to retain it as part of the homeowners association. Reason we want to do that is that if in the prior activity, when a sidewalk would be built along 19, it would become the ownership and maintenance of all of the lots that back onto it. So lots 1918, et cetera, et cetera, down to 14, and then lot number 12 would have way down over the hill, a sidewalk that they may or may not maintain, may or may not have liability for, and we just saw all sorts of issues. So we said instead, let's make it part of the homeowners association. And that it would be an element that would then be put in by the developer. The sidewalks on lots are put in by the builder. So this way we can make sure that it's all done at one time and be done with as part of it. So the next two slides, or the next slide splits the streets, and I know it's maybe a little bit difficult, because the top slide is, the top half of the slide is looking from our entrance road through lots 1918, 76, 14, through those. And you can see, again, it's very difficult at the scale, but you'll see the purple outline is that's the sidewalk. And then at the bottom half of the screen, we sort of have a match line, we're then carrying it on the rest of the way to Sarver Lane on the bottom. So it does show how we would do so. And again, if we could, if we zoomed in enough, you'd only see so many little bits and pieces. But you can see the sidewalk in there where we have little segments of red. And maybe you'd like to point to those, RJ, right there. So that's through about 400 feet right there. And then at the bottom one, there's a little segment of about 50 feet where we'd have a little two foot high retaining wall. Again, just to be able to facilitate the installation of the sidewalk.
So out of the total distance on Route 19, there's a 400 foot section and a, whatever you said, 50.
50 foot.
So, all the rest of it does not require a retaining wall.
Correct. We were a little surprised, but what we did was how we, how we looked so closely at where to position the sidewalk and, and were able to get it in. Last month, when I was here, I was warned to you, we couldn't do it without significant retaining walls. But we just took a really, really hard look, we pulled out the PennDOT construction drawings and said, oh my goodness, we can do so with only two foot retaining walls. So it was pretty relatively, you know, it's expensive, but it's relatively feasible to do so. So if you see in the top right corner, the sidewalk will go to our north easterly corner. We would have the crosswalk coming across our street and then continuing on. Now, one of the things that we have on the top screen, again, the first two lots, you'll see a lot more green between the roadway and there. That is where PennDOT has their guide rail and an overhead mast sign. And obviously, we could, and it's not on their right of way, it's on our property. So we couldn't just sort of blow right through their steel. So we went up and around, fortunately, we were in an area where we can grade back our lots. So those first two lots, the slopes were more like four to one, so we can go in and cut, you know, a cut slope in there and facilitate that. So in that area, we widened out the homeowners association area to be, to incorporate the whole sidewalk. So basically from our entry sign area, we see a triangular shaped area on the left side of the entry where our sign would be, we put that into the HOA and then continued all the way down. And at the far end at the bottom left, that larger green was always going to be homeowners association. That's the storm detention facility.
Do you remind me what that thick red line that comes off of the sidewalk area and extends up into the green?
That's the access to the detention facility. We needed to provide an access road.
Okay.
If we could drop back two slides to the prior subdivision. And if RJ, if you could go down to the Sarver intersection with your pointer there. A little further down. You'll see a white line there, that was our, to the right a little bit.
Oh, you're, oh, I didn't.
I want you to go right there. So that was to be our detention access because, and it was going to go up and around to get to the detention facility. But it also was serving as our trail to continue it on. If we now scroll up a little bit higher, you'll see previously we had a trail that ran behind lots eleven, ten, nine, and eight, and between seven and eight. We've, the majority of that trail is already cut in. It says a berm there. For some reason, the, years and years ago, somebody cut that in. So what we did was, on the next slide, you'll see, we eliminated that. We now have the sidewalk out there. So the discussion about can we make that trail eight percent? I think that was your question. No, we couldn't. Uh, now, do we, you know, how do we facilitate? Well, we don't need it anymore. So that's why we're able to afford the sidewalk down below is that we were going to be spending money anyway for a much longer detention access and the trail. Those things go away. We can spend the money where it's, I'll say, more community-oriented for the trail. So we hope that that, that will be an acceptable option for you.
That's good news about the retaining wall. Very good news.
Yeah, well, we were surprised and happy that we could facilitate that too, because certainly it was strongly asked for. Next slide, please, or two slides. I think we want to jump to stormwater. Right there, please. What we're looking at here is, the top picture is what we call the pre-development watersheds. And, uh, and the bottom one is the post-development watershed. Those who are accustomed to reading stormwater management, these are common terms. But basically, the top one says, today, the water that falls in the green area flows to the top of the sheet that's in a westerly direction to a point of measurement. It's called a POI, point of interest for stormwater purposes. And the pink area on the top, all of that water flows to the south easterly corner of the site, the lower-left corner there. And the engineers have defined that as another POI point of interest. So they're able to measure the flows in those two areas and calculate what the CFS giving feet per second for that. When we do the development, we change the shape of the watersheds. And that a significant portion, about three-quarters of the green area is now going to be captured in a stormwater in the rear yards and carried around to the detention facility. The area on the map on the bottom has a pink outline, which is the non-undisturbed area that does not go to the detention facility, and the heavy red dashed is that area which does. So the engineer now has broken area one, which was pink up above, into now area one A and one B for purposes of stormwater calculations. Next slide. This picture shows the storm detention. And, and in the lower-left portion of site where the yellow-green is, but also in the blue shows the storm sewer system. And if we look at the rear of lots one through eleven, and maybe, RJ, can your pointer follow that blue line? It's from eleven back up and around. Along that storm sewer line, there are catch basins and laterals off of it to pick up the runoff from the houses at the rear. The runoff at the front of the house flows to the street and the catch basins in the street. That system picks it up. And likewise, at the rear of twelve to nineteen, there is another storm sewer in the rear yards systems that picks it up, all of which carries it. So back up one slide. Sorry. And so that's how we define the red dashed area as being the collected area, and it's all delivered to that area. Two slides, please.
Down?
Down, please, yes. Sorry. All right. So this chart comes from the stormwater management report. And it identifies the points of interest at POI one, which is the detention facility. And it tells us the breakdown for the one, two, five, ten, twenty-five, fifty, and a hundred-year storm. And it's on our site, we're only allowed to release sixty percent of the water. So no matter what we do, we must store back forty percent infiltrated. So that's sort of the minimum benchmark we have to have. So last month, when I said, we're gonna put out more, less water than what we had, I guarantee you it's because you, you have us in a sixty percent release rate. But if you look at what we actually do, the hydrograph for the post-development, be the second column from the right, goes through and gives the CFS giving feet per second for each of those storm events. And then the far right tells you the pre-post release rate. So for the one-year storm, we're not holding back sixty percent, we're holding back seventy-five percent. We're only releasing twenty-five, et cetera. And so we sort of for discussion purposes, we sort of focus on the hundred-year storm. You know, it's the big, big guy in the room. So for the hundred-year storm, our release rate is seven-point-four-seven CFS giving feet per second. And that's a fifty-eight-point-nine percent of the original. So maybe you're sixty. What's interesting is if in the chart of the, or in the stormwater management report, there's another chart that says what the pre-development rate was. So I just brought it forward here in red. And currently today, at a hundred-year storm watershed one, the pink one would be discharging twelve-point-six-nine CFS coming out of our detention facility during that hundred years, seven-point-four-seven. So we are reducing, significantly reducing, and complying with your code requirement for those storm events. Now, next slide, because we had two watersheds. This was be the green watershed. As it said, this is point of interest number two. There'd be watershed number two. That was the green one. And again, same sort of thing. And if we just jump to the hundred-year storm, we are releasing three-point-two-four CFS where prior to it, we're, we were releasing ten-point-four-six. So the gentleman down on Sarver, who is getting the backwater, you know, from the front area, we'll see a reduction coming off there based on what we're doing. How we're able to do it in detentions or area two, the green area, is because before it was about a four-acre watershed. And we're gonna collect three of it, take it away, and now we only have a one acre. So we have no stormwater management within that area. We just reduce the overall water. So.
And the green area goes toward the Oak Ridge group of homes?
It doesn't. It goes in that direction, but it never gets to them because between our property and their property, there is a valley, a swale area, a drainage way. And so it would be physically impossible for a drop of rain on our property to go into that subdivision, you know. There might be one of the houses up in the corner that might get a little bit of water off of that area, but if you followed a raindrop, it, it goes down into the valley and, and turns and does not get into the open.
Well, assuming we might find some residents who might disagree with that statement, that rain never reaches their property. Nevertheless, it would be reduced by whatever that was, two-thirds, give or take, if it did reach their property.
Yes. 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 Can't remember. Is there one more slide? I don't think.
That was the last.
Okay.
Having some, a comment, a question, I guess. In looking at the latest Gateway Engineers' letter, which is dated April twenty ninth, Dan indicates, like, my count, forty-plus, forty-five-plus items that needed to be addressed.
He's wrong.
Okay.
They don't need to be addressed. I would say he's identified for us items that will need to be addressed at the time of final plans or will need to be addressed once approval is granted in terms of the developer's agreement, NPDS, HOP, third-party permits. And you know, Dan, and we appreciate this, Dan's philosophy on this is to identify not only what things we need to address today, which we think we've done, but also has identified this said in the future, although he doesn't say it, it's clearly that in some ways it's frustrating that he comes up with a forty-one item thinks that makes us look bad, but significant, massive, the majority of it is non-preliminary plan items.
Well, then I'm showing my own lack of knowledge about this because as I look at five or six pages worth of item after item after item after item, it looks like there's a whole lot to be done. But is, is his description accurate?
I, I need, I need a comment because Steve has presented a plan that conceptually works that generally complies with the subdivision land development. It's the lot's people size, that it may need to be in streets as mechanical standards. But it doesn't have engineering detail. Steve has presented a concept. His, his approach to this is that you will turn this over to engineers to prepare the final plans. Am I correct?
Correct. The engineers have worked with us to this point to do the survey, the stormwater management. And they have worked with us on the design and layout of the storm sewer system and the sanitary sewer system.
So, so the only thing that I would, in my, my humble opinion is that, in fact, solely, I have been told that preliminary approval is tantamount to final approval unless something significant changes. So while third-party permits are not significantly, as he says, FDS permit, a cannot permit, those types of things with third-party. Uh, I, I do think that details and things that still need answered on the plans. You know, Steve, we, we see the concept for the wall, but there's not a lot of detail on it, like, there's not even spot elevations on here as to where, you know, where, what the wall's gonna look like. I, I just would feel comfortable, more comfortable buttoning up some of more of these engineering details, and I realize the developer may have to pay an engineer to do some of these things, but, but I think that we need, in a preliminary sense, this isn't like the quote-unquote master plan that will remove the preliminary plans, the final plan. This is the, but this preliminary plan, you bring it back in one time, it, it, it's gotta be, it, it's it should be, it should be very simple to get the final plan through. I mean, that's, that's my take. I'll, I'll, you know, I'll defer to this list, or I mean, we had a big change between this meeting and the last meeting with the wall and the sidewalk. I would just prefer to, if, you know, I know we're up against the time that, that we work out some of these final details. I mean, if that's the planning commission's opinion, I, I just say, from my perspective, I, I'd still like to get some of the engineering things answered. I know one of the questions that come up is like, how much of previous areas on the lots, you need to see a description of how much is being assumed so that when in the future, when these things come in, that they're, they're, they're defined in terms of somebody else wants to add on to these lots, and we know how much stormwater we have in the pond, and how much more they're gonna have to do on a particular lot. So while I think the plan generally conforms, I just think my advice is that we need some more engineering detail before I'm finally comfortable.
I would respectfully disagree, strongly disagree. You have a code that says in, that says we have the right to prepare a preliminary plan. We've prepared our plans consistent with that preliminary plan. Dan is now asking us to jump from the preliminary plan to the final plan. Sounds easy to do, but it isn't. There's a risk that takes place by now going out and doing full construction drawings, tens of thousands of dollars to do full construction drawings, when you have not, nor has your council said you like this plan. That's the basis of a preliminary plan. I think you have to follow your code to say that. Now, that is what I'm saying. If that's not what you want to do.
You're entitled to.
If you're, if you were telling me that I should not be following your ordinance, and that in order to vote on the preliminary, you need final plan information. You basically leave me no choice but to give you final plan information. But I'm telling you, I'm not happy for my client.
And I, I don't know enough to know what is needed for our approval. I, I, I've the entire time I've been on this.
We can go to the letter point by point, if we want to talk about particular items that are, that are concerned.
Yeah. I, I don't know what the right process should be. Now, in any case, we're up against some sort of a timeline. This ninety-day MPC timeline?
Yes.
Okay, which we can extend.
Which the developer can consent to extend.
And as I said to you today, that seems entirely backward to me. If it's, if it's your items that are not totally up to snuff, we have to ask you whether it can be extended.
That's the law. That is the law.
I, I'll, I'll concede that it might be, might be what the law is. It's not a good one. But so we can, we can ask you, in your graciousness, whether or not this can be extended, so some of these things can get resolved. I don't know whether it makes sense for us to go through forty-five items tonight.
I think if we could go through ten, let's go through ten items, the first ten. And I'll tell you what I think the answer to those, and we don't have to read the whole thing, just give me a, a brief summary, and I'll tell you whether it really is a preliminary plan issue, a final plan issue, or a third-party, meaning post-approval period, the developer's agreement, the bonding, and third-party permits, HOP, NPDS.
Steve.
If you would.
Get the solicitor.
He's, he's, he's available. Um, either Steve, really, I suppose. Steve Corbell. Would you like to chime in?
Yeah, so, so I, I, I do, I do not disagree with Dan, that I, I do believe that, you know, if we provide preliminary approval without doing so in, in a careful manner, it does provide the developer with the opportunity to sort of drive a Mack truck through our ordinance requirements as it relates to items not addressed in the preliminary approved. I've read many cases about it. A lot of it happens out east. It seems more of a common occurrence out there than it does here in Western Pennsylvania. A lot of the approvals are preliminary and final combined out this way. But, you know, to, to the extent that there are items that can be ticked off quickly and without much expense, I, I don't see why we wouldn't want to address those and knock them out, if you will, and then find out what really is left to, to be discussed further, and then maybe that will inform us as to what we should be conditioning any potential motions for approval or disapproval, as the case may be this evening.
I think what Steve has said is interesting. Maybe Dan could throw out five items that he thinks are so critical for the preliminary, or which we will be driving our Mack truck through would be helpful, and then maybe that will enlighten me.
Well, Steve, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take one of the five. So sorry, Dan, you got four. Um, we're looking at.
I don't think we only have five, by the way. We can have as many.
I'm just saying.
With all due respect to Mr. Victor.
I'm taking the first one. We're going back to the code. The things that shall be provided in preliminary approval plans, all fences and walls with complete designs and designing, including cross-sections of all walls at intervals at fifty feet. I would particularly be interested in that information because we've heard until now that we need a ten-foot retaining wall in this Perry Highway sidewalk. So if it can be done with a two-foot retaining wall or none in some areas, since that is one of the items that is mentioned in the preliminary plan data, that's something that I would be very interested in seeing. Dan, number two?
Uh, I would just defer to all of the stormwater comments. If you're stormwater consultants on board, why can't we get these comments answered? So there's, there's a number of those that are due to the stormwater management. So while Steve, you've given a great presentation tonight on this, we still have specific comments related to the stormwater report. So getting those accomplished and off the list would be, would be, you know, beneficial to, to know when it's okay.
Yep.
We have no preliminary recorded plan, do we? I mean, do we actually have a plan with clauses on it?
No, you don't record preliminary plans, so no, there is not.
We need to see at least a preliminary plan.
You have one, there is a preliminary subdivision plan.
There's no clauses on the plan.
There's not a requirement for clauses unless you tell me that there is that.
Now, how are you gonna create the lots if we don't have a plan, so?
Well, we use a final plan, Dan, you 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 know that a final plan is what you record, you don't record a preliminary. But if you have a section of the ordinance that says a preliminary plan needs to be have a signature places, we can do so.
As point of inquiry, is it, is it possible for us to take up a vote on it, but to condition upon satisfaction of every single point of the gateway letter?
Yes. That certainly makes some sense, I don't know who it is then that make sure all those things do in fact get done, whose whose responsibility is it to oversee all those items somewhere down the road?
I ultimately signed the plan
Okay.
as a professional and stated the plan meets the requirements of the calculus subdivision land development ordinance, so it's my responsibility to report back to the planning commission and everything, so okay. That's why I'm trying to be, you know, I have, I have professional responsibility here too. Not just advising you guys, it doesn't leave me, so.
I mean, that and I'm I'm the quarterback for all of this, I mean, I would be remiss if I would recommend it to town council and approval and ignore the conditions of the engineer's letter.
Agreed, agreed, I I I'm all for moving this forward and, you know, however it gets voted on, I I want it to move forward and we've, we've been here. You know, how many months going through this, you've got to be more tired of this than anybody, but again, there are forty plus items here that give me some pause. And if it's unnecessary pause, I'm willing to concede, we could vote on this thing and say contingent upon every one of these being satisfactorily met and agreed to by gateway engineering.
I mean, I I I I think we're heading in the right direction, what makes me nervous. Dan, are there not comments in there that require us to have an H O P, an N P D S?
It's agreed that third party permits would have to wait until after
Okay.
after final approval or you know, so that's always a contingency, I I have no problem with third party permits.
Okay.
I just want to be able to assure the planning commission and town council with the plan. Ultimately, that there will not be any changes to the preliminary plan to the final plan. Because really, you know, that that's what's guiding us here and and we can't, we, you know, if there's changes, any significant changes we're supposed to come back to the perimeter, right, I mean.
Agree, the a solicitor here can tell you that if there are substantive changes between the preliminary and final, the preliminary is voided, you have to start over. We understand that.
That's true, that is true.
Do you get into disputes as to substantive?
Uh, you get the, that's one you get.
It's our, it's our call.
It's your call.
We get to vote on what's substantive and what's not.
I've always taken that position, Mr. Corvett, and I I I would not advise anything different here. And and secondly, I was just to add on to to Dan's comment, the these third party approvals are rarely obtained by the time of final approval, they're always a condition of final approval, very rarely are they in hand, the developer having H O Ps or N P D S permits in hand.
Dan?
Yes.
I I I just have a, I guess, an opinion here. Having, though it wasn't extended, having spent time on council. I will tell you, I often felt as if plans were were approved, recommended by planning commission with all of those things that were suggested that, you know, we could say, okay, subject to everything. Here, we're recommending it. And I have to tell you that I actually think that this planning commission did a disservice to council. I think there's more that we could and should do and that we should look at more carefully, I mean fact, we already know that there's a deficiency in the preliminary plan. We do not have a, and I agree, we had a what was supposed to be a twelve foot high retaining wall in one meeting, and now it's a two foot retaining wall for fifty feet.
Two different locations, though. There were ten twelve foot high, and it wasn't twelve, it was a six foot high wall for a sound barrier at the top of the hill, it had nothing to do with the sidewalk.
Oh, no, 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 that's not the conversation that happened. I, in the meeting, asked Dan what he thought and it was concurred by you, I believe that it would be a massive retaining wall in order to have a Route nineteen sidewalk. And we don't have, and that according to our requirements is required, we don't have it tonight.
You you have, you have it in the plans. The plans show the location of the sidewalk and show it's labeled as a two foot high retaining wall.
We have cross sections of the walls?
No, we do not have cross sections because that's if that's.
We were just told is required for preliminary plan.
Okay, that was, that has
I'm just saying.
Understood previously.
And and again, this is an opinion, I think that this is a location and you're and I I I do think that the information you presented to us tonight was 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 very good and informative about the stormwater management. I still think that there's and and I think within the community and certainly myself. I don't know about my colleagues, that I'm still concerned about know wanting to know more about stormwater and ensuring that the concerns of the the adjacent residential neighborhoods are protected. I would also like to know more, and I understand that a lot of it falls under the your Penn Dot permits, but I would like to know more, I'm I'm still concerned about the requirements or having information to understand and for the residents as well about how you're going to accomplish these site distances. Which I'm still not, I mean, I drive it almost every day, I'm I'm not saying you can't do it. I'm just saying, we don't have more specifics about how you're going to accomplish that, so over and I I could go through a whole bunch more things that concern me personally, but I just feel like there's some big gaps in what I as a planning commission member would feel comfortable representing the council that I recommend this and I think you should too, that's what I'm saying, that's my position, Dan.
As as it relates to the traffic. If you haven't done so, I would appreciate if you would read the traffic report.
I have.
Okay.
And I, but there's still how you're gonna get some of those distances and I, and again, I I'd like to know more, but I know it's not a McCandless, something McCandless can require, but I was still hoping that Penn Dot might use your traffic information to realize that the data points are close enough to warrant to close to warranting a D cell lane to help safety and entering the plant, which you did say that you would discuss with Penn Dot, but of course.
And I came back and said no.
They did, well.
Yeah.
That's new news.
They they said no to it.
Yeah.
I I'll just note that I I know, I know that R J was talking about the cross sections and Mr. Victor was claiming it wasn't required. But when I I'm looking in the ordinance, there is, it does indicate that it should include I'm gonna read this, so I quote typical cross sections and construction details of proposed streets, drainage structures and other proposed improvements. And this is the app, you know, and what's required for an application of preliminary plat plan, so I do think that those things are required by the ordinance and that's why I I think if if what I'm hearing correctly is that the planning commission would like those, I think we should move in that direction. It sounds like, Mr. Victor, you're not saying no, you're saying that you'll begrudgingly do it, so. Just understanding.
I was just getting ready to that point to say that I'll be at I'll be happy to grant you an extension, I'm not sure my client will be, but we'll be happy to grant you an extension.
What would be needed? Or what time would be needed for you to?
Additional thirty days, so we'll be back to you. We will address these items in the next two weeks, we'll get N N R J a response letter and appropriate plans. And that hopefully when we are here, that we will have addressed everything. I do not believe, and Dan, correct me if I'm gonna, or I'm on this one, but I do not believe that you will see a shortened letter.
A shortened gateway letter?
A shortened gateway letter, because the way Dan writes the letters, he will keep all forty one items there. And he will put a statement, and I don't remember from the top of my head, his his words there, but it's basically we discussed it or, you know, to be addressed, or not to be addressed, but what what is the magic word?
Comment will remain until the item is addressed.
Thank you, comment remain, I would tell you, those things will remain next week, next month.
But I.
And I I would hope that Dan would not write that such a letter, that he will focus the letter to be on what he perceives to be actual items of default that we have shorted on. And if he wants to then talk about third party permits, put it in, you know, a separate paragraph at the end so that we can clearly look that we have addressed all of the items.
I mean, I'll I'll say for, you know, everyone's benefit here, typically the very last section, the general comments, that's where all the third party permits tend to land, again, it is very normal for those to remain because you're never gonna get or an N P D S review within the state's granted timeline, so that's a solid page at the end.
I I am not asking him to not include thirty part, third party permits. I'm not asking him to exclude final plan items, just delineate the items that we are short on relative to the preliminary plan process.
Well, I'm trying to throw you a bone by telling them that you're gonna have a solid page, page and a half between the traffic comments and the general that so that are just gonna be there no matter what you do, so.
And.
You're down to five already, look at that.
Oh, we'll be happy to grant you a thirty day extension. For that.
Like Steve, like like when you say more, why can't we get it?
We can do that, Dan, would it be possible if you just assert, just anything in there, okay, I'll I'll just make sure everything under stormwater is is I get the details from Lance Smith and we put it on there.
We need to have that that clear, you know, all the stormwater comments are my biggest concern in the wall, understanding how the walls can be built. They're they're my biggest concern, we can, we can argue semantics over the the need for reported plan, if it's not required in the preliminary.
Okay.
I think stormwater is the most concerning, just to to verify the wall and understand what's gonna be built. I wanted to see it in the field and understand what it's gonna be, make sure it's it's feasible.
That's a steep slope, I mean, that's that that's giving me the heebie jeebies a little bit, I gotta be honest.
I'm pleasantly surprised, but if you say it to be done, I'm I'm hoping it can be.
One of the things that I should probably point out to you, Dan, is that the Penn Dot shoulder and the curb on the shoulder is on our property, not Penn Dot right away. So we're able to facilitate what we're doing because we're able to, right at the edge of the shoulder, put the sidewalk.
You know, the shoulder is gonna stay, you're gonna start right after this sidewalk, it started right after the shoulder.
Yes, yes, yeah, we we had that discussion with Wooster. Our traffic engineer, we said, hey, listen, their shoulder is on our property. What's the chances of us putting the sidewalk where their shoulder is? And we got a resounding no, even though we own it, they put the asphalt down first, so they get to claim it, but we're able to facilitate, so when you do go out and take a look at this, where you see their curb line, we are right behind that. And that's why we're able to fit it in.
Except in the area that you had to go around the extension.
There, yeah, then then we got them up onto our ground.
I do have a question about your these backyard, based on your own presentation, the backyard drainage system.
Yes.
Is a key component, you would agree, a key component to how you're going to manage that stormwater and reduce it from existing conditions.
Is a significant component, yes, I wouldn't call it the key, but it's say say significant.
A significant component, right, so. One of my concerns is that you have decided that that's going to be a private what, H O A, H O A owned storm line?
Yes.
And I guess that concerns me because I look at these, I look at these, your subdivision layout and the way these fall in these people's yards, so first of all, I always am concerned, are the H O A gonna can if there's, if if they're a significant portion of the of of the stormwater management, are they going to be maintained by the H O A? And it's a very small development, so we all know how HOAs go, ten, twenty years, fifteen years down the line. And they are only, I I I guess I may ask, I would, I would feel better if these were public storm lines. I mean, you know, you might not like that. Well, it's not, it's just the messaging we're getting lately from council seems to be strongly preferring the and I know we don't want that. The, from what we're hearing, just lately discussing in our council stormwater committee is that the preference is going towards private ownership, so. And I I I understand that that concept and not wanting to take on, you know, the the money and that, that's a whole issue that council has to deal with in terms of how do you do that and. Just just relaying the message, but. I guess I am, I'm concerned about what happened, you you're, those lots there, like people are not gonna be able to put in pools or something based on.
No, so some of the lots are definitely big enough that there's room for pools, absolutely.
The the ones that have the, I I understand on the the east side of the development, but.
Even both sides.
I just, I'm just concerned about those, those, again, because a stormwater basin is one thing and has pretty consistent, you know, needs for maintenance and you know, pretty standard stuff, I just worry about lines that are in people's backyards that God knows what could happen to them, get plugged up, not working, and that it's a significant component to your system, so that's just one of my stormwater concerns.
Well, I'm not sure where we are on this thirty day extension that you have offered. Why that is, I'll never understand that one, but what do we have to do, do we vote on that, do we vote to accept his thirty day extension?
No.
We just accepted?
That's something that the developer just grants, typically I follow up with a signature page just to memorialize it, so provide that to you when it's prepared. I suppose, based on what we did last month, we voted to officially table it, so that is probably what you'd wanna do again tonight.
Okay, I mean, I'm happy to do that, if the thirty days is enough time to resolve some of these issues, and it sounds like it should be.
Should be.
Yeah, I would just like to say that I, you know, looking through the the comments, and Dan, correct me if you disagree with this, I think it has many of the land development comments and the stormwater comments, I can't be addressed in the next thirty days or address, I think that is one way to putting all of our potential features. I think the only other item I saw outside of those two sections that was potentially large was number three under the traffic comments for the sight lines. I think those kind of encapsulate most of the discussion that we had.
Jay, can you focus on those?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, should we get a motion to table this for till the next meeting?
Comment first.
I'm sorry, do we need public comment, or? We do, I'm I'm seeing you not, Steve. Okay, I'm sorry, I always forget that, public comments on anything that we've said tonight. No? Nothing online?
No, there's nobody but Steve.
Okay. All right, so we will need a vote. All right, so we will need a vote. Start again. We need a motion to table this still for thirty days.
I would say till the next planning commission meeting. I'm not sure what the timeline is.
Yeah, okay.
June seventh is the next meeting?
Yep.
It's a little more than thirty days.
Make a motion to table this project to the next meeting.
Does that require a vote?
I would recommend it.
Okay.
Do we, what do we first need if it's not going to be, if it's going to be more than thirty days to the next meeting? Do we need an agreement with the developer on that number of days?
So the way, the way that we have things set up based on how our ordinance requires us to accept the applications at the planning commission meeting. Functionally speaking, I don't think that this application expires until almost the day of the next planning commission meeting at this point. However, town council needs to take action within that MPC timeline window. And so therefore, the last action date, as I usually cite it, for town council right now is May twenty-third. But based on the way that we accept the applications and start the clock at the planning commission, giving a thirty-day extension will get us past June twenty-seventh, which is what the new last action date would become for town council.
Basically, I'm not giving you thirty days from today. I've just extended the ninety-day clock to a hundred and twenty-day clock. This is, I think, how most municipalities interpret it, and that's how I sort of act with it. So we, we're just moving you, your total clock length by thirty more days.
All right, so we've had a motion. I think we need a vote. All in favor?
Oh, thank you. Who's the second? John?
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Carrie's unanimous.
Thank you. See you next month.
Are we down to the approval of the minutes, and then we'll have the discussion that you talked about, Brendan? We need a motion to approve the April five, twenty-twenty-two minutes. Can I have such a motion? Shelley, so moved, second?
Second.
Second, Jonathan. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
Me, I, I'm opposed.
Want to put one opposition, great.
Are there any comments or suggested revisions? We can certainly take those.
Well, I just looked at the, I felt the planning commission was done a great injustice by not being allowed to fulfill their duty under the municipal plan code, the zoning code, town charter and, and the implemental comprehensive plan. The man mentions, I, I said municipal plan code and zoning code, actually missed the town code, but they are one and the same for zoning. But I, but do not mention that I said the town charter or implemental comprehensive plan. These two items tend to add credibility to my concerns. That is, the town charter and the implemental comprehensive plans.
So your concern would be satisfied if we were to amend the draft to include mention of the town charter in the implementable comprehensive plan in your comments?
Well, in part, I, I also took issue with the, the focus, these focus discussions having private, with no minutes, no notice to the public and no one, not, no one, not a member of the task force. And Michael, Michael Baker representatives could, could be a violation of the sunshine law. There is no mention of the sunshine law, my, my. Of the sunshine law in the midst.
Okay, so, so by adding the mention in that section where it says MPC zoning code, by adding mention of the town charter, the implementable comprehensive plan, and also adding mention somewhere that your concerns included whether this could be a sunshine law violation to hold the meetings in this way. Would you be satisfied with the minutes otherwise as presented?
Oh, actually, and with respect to this project we just were looking at, I did mention something about the, the, the draft, the myths that were held when this the meeting was approved back, I think it was back in two thousand or some, it was pretty soon moved, and, and I thought that was pretty important. Fact that the, the events mentioned, the events we had, was it ninety-two or something like that? Of that thing was not, not, not approved, was approved in ninety-seven or something. And was not carried, carried, carried on by the, the developer. Somewhere in there, I said, meant, meant.
Do you mean the, the previous, two thousand six?
Two thousand six.
So you would, you would like the minutes to also incorporate a comment about the plan previously.
Approved, and I'm not following up on it.
Well, it was denied by council.
No, it was approved.
Oh, excuse me. It was initially denied, and then they called a special meeting to
Right.
approve it. Okay, so we, you would like us to add to this draft your comments from the last meeting about how the plan was.
May I make a recommendation?
Yeah, maybe we should just go with the five to one.
Well, usually before you make a motion to approve minutes, you say, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? And then if you adjust, if you deal with that first, then you can have Greg's statement of, I would like to have this edited, or I would like to have this changed. Now, when it's this substantive, what I would have done is just said, why don't we just wait on the minutes? Until we can have those corrections, and if everybody's okay with that. Now, the motion's already in progress, so Steve, I don't know how we get out of it now. But if we had done that in the beginning to say, I have substance, pretty significant changes I think need to be made. And then if they, because changing it right here is no good, because it still may not.
I apologize. I, I did not anticipate.
So, but, and that's why I would always ask first, are there changes? And so it has to be changes. So I.
So, so the motioner and the seconder can, you know, withdraw their motion at this point, if that's, since there hasn't been a vote. And then the, the group can vote to table this, or somebody could make a motion to table at this point. It would take precedence over the motion and the second, to table it until the, the corrections are made.
Yeah, we did.
Was there an actual vote?
They, well, they, they went five, five-one, and so I asked Greg.
Oh, yes, that's right.
We condemned it. So in that case.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we prepare an amendment, and then the group can consider it at the next meeting?
Amendment to the minutes?
Yes, yep. I'm sorry, I forgot that we, we actually voted that. My. But yeah, I think that would, you know, if Greg has some amendments, then put it, let's put them in writing, and then we can present it to the planning commission in June, and you all can vote on it at that.
Now, in the meantime, because I know council has a priority to get minutes out quickly, are we allowed to publicize the current minutes since they were approved, or should we hold off until we have an amendment?
You, you can present, you can publish them. I would just note that they may be amended at the June seventh meeting.
I do that. All right.
And you'll work with Greg to resolve those changes? Okay. Who to thunk? Fourth item on there, are any general public comments? Do we have any general public comments for anything that's been happening tonight? Hearing none. Brendan, you wanted to add a discussion item about the overall task force and the planning commission interaction. And I forget whether this needed a vote, a motion, or what?
If we're just discussing, it doesn't need to be voted.
Okay.
If we're voting on something, we have to vote to vote on it.
Well, it's.
Like vote to be able to vote on.
Brendan, you, you brought it up, so I'll let you kick it off, as to what it is you wanted to do.
Yeah, I, I don't foresee a vote as a particular action item here. What I, what I sense from the last couple of meetings and the emails preceding the last meeting is it seems that there's a lot of beating around the bush within the planning commission about how exactly we feel with respect to Michael Baker and the rezoning process at large. I presume the township's paying Michael Baker a lot of money. So I don't know if necessarily our desire to involve ourselves more is something that the township cuts a check for. Because I would imagine there's a higher-up agreement between the township and Michael Baker as to exactly the protocols of what's done, how it's done, who is involved in the schedule. You know, I think that, you know, writing an ordinance is hard, going through multiple ordinances is hard, redoing zoning maps is hard. And I think to some degree, the MPC, the existing zoning ordinances and the aspirational points of the planning commission getting into the weeds and drafting these things, I think is probably functionally unrealistic when there's professionals that it's their stock and trade. We're here once a month for a couple hours. They do it all day, every day, and are paid to do it. So, you know, my view is that, you know, RJ is functionally the gatekeeper to them. Shelley's on the task force. You know, to me, it seems like there's a lot of divergent views that we have as individual people as to what we'd like to see, which I don't, I've not encountered anything that prohibits anyone from voicing their concern like any other resident. I think the planning commission can and should have a, a role, and I, I haven't seen where we've been written out of it. My view is simply that if, if the planning commission is going to take some kind of position on we want to be involved in the process, I think the planning commission's got to come up with an internal unified view of exactly what it is that the planning commission wants to do. And whether that implementable goal of what the planning commission wants to do can be otherwise accomplished through means that are available, such that if, you know, Dan, you're interested in transit, I'm interested in high-rise commercial, and some, you know, whatever. Those are all our aspirational views individually, but not necessarily representing the collective of planning. Where I may say the planning commission's goal is, let's have this make sense. Let's use, you know, language that's simple and clear. Let's use references where you reference one thing and get the answer versus flipping through to sixteen different subsections and trying to figure out which one's the best one, and then you realize there's three words missing and you can't figure out what it means. That, to me, is more of a planning commission than, than what I sense, or it seems to me, is a desire almost to get into the weeds of sitting there with Michael Baker and saying, this street should be this, this street should be that, this definition should be this, this land you should be that, where asteroids are going to want to hit Earth before that ever gets done. So it just seems to me that there's a desire to get in there, but it's, I think we might as well state it. And from my standpoint, I don't have a problem. Michael Baker's getting paid. Michael Baker knows how to do it. Multiple people out of the community were picked to provide their opinion. I can't say that mine's any better or worse. And part of how the sausage is made, I don't necessarily need to see it, so long as there's work products that are provided. And I just don't get the sense that there's any cover of darkness issue where things are happening that we're never going to see and we're never going to weigh in on. I suspect that we're going to get a lot of stuff, and the stuff that we get is going to be so dense that that takes a lot of time, such that it's a better idea to have professionals take the first crack at it, informed by a task force in the community, and then we get it versus us interjecting ourselves into every bit of brand newer detail. And if there's a desire on the commission to say, look, we want to get involved in the brand newer detail. We want a seat at the table equal to the, the steering task force and Michael Baker, then let's just decide that that's what we want to do as a commission as a whole versus individuals on the commission who want to shepherd the process through, which is fine as a citizen of McInnes. Or we say, well, we're concerned about the higher level issues to make sure that readability, implementability, saying what we want, preliminary plans, final plans, if that's all clear, so we don't have fights over developers' view of what's needed. Is that what we want to do, or are we just saying, let's take a step back, whatever comes to us, comes to us? I think we need to have a clear sense of what the planning commission as a whole believes about that. Because to me, I, I don't think that it's ever going to get resolved. It's, it seems like, well, did you have a meeting? What came up at the meeting? Did you, what did you discuss? Is there a work part? Which are all valid questions? But it, it seems that there needs to be a clearing of the air to make sure that there's not just this view of almost that there's something going behind our back, and we're just going to be forced to an up or down, and that's it. Which I don't see, but I think we might as well have that frank discussion. So that's my discussion of that. I don't see an action item to resolve, to do anything. My sense would be perhaps for next meeting, if individual planning commission members come forward with what their view of involvement in the process would ideally be. And there could be a vote amongst the sense of the planning commission on what we as a planning commission would want to do to get involved with a plan of action. I.e. telling Michael Baker, we want to be in these meetings. We're telling Michael Baker and town council, we want to be in these meetings. We're saying, here's a list of five or six bullet points that we want to submit as a commission through RJ or Shelley, or whoever gets it into that process. We're emailing it to Michael Baker. These are the things that we as a commission are resolved unanimously and acting on behalf of the commission versus Brendan O'Donnell or somebody else with their own views. Or we say, we don't want to do anything at all, and then we don't do anything at all. But then it should probably close the book on the planning commissions. What are we jumping in to do? How are we jumping in to do it now versus waiting for the first deliverables to come from the actual process that was approved months ago?
I think it's well stated. I, I wish this discussion had occurred prior to this planning group getting established. It wasn't. That's water over the dam. I personally am not interested in getting into the weeds. I am not a planner, I mean, not a planner in the sense of creating zoning plans. That's not my background, never was, never will be. So I am not interested in getting into the weeds. What I thought made sense, and what I wanted to have happen two months ago, when we first heard about this, in February, maybe that's more than two months ago now, at our February meeting when we first heard about this. What I wanted to have happen was that we understand what our role was going to be. We still don't know what our role is going to be, and we're at the May meeting. And if we wait until next month, we're at the halfway project, halfway mark in this entire project. So I'll, I'll admit that I think it's been poorly handled. I'll say that upfront. But I am not interested in getting into the weeds. I do not want to do that. It's not what I am good at, and it's not something that I can bring to the table. What I would like to be able to do is to have a little more of our ability to be involved in some of these discussions and not have to wait, as was originally suggested, not have to wait until the June meeting and the December meeting, or whatever those two meetings were. Those were our only points at which we could contribute. We were supposed to be, we were told we would be given other opportunities to, to read drafts and things like that, but, but again, no detail, none whatsoever as to when and what would happen during those occasions. So I'm, I'm like you, Brendan, in that I don't want to get involved in the weeds, and I am happy to be involved in some supervisory capacity. To this moment, I don't know what that supervisory capacity is. And, and, and we will find out at, after Gate, or whoever they are, is going to talk to their project manager. Then we'll, then we'll have a better understanding of what we will be allowed to do. I find it all backwards, and that's been my assessment ever since this started.
Yeah, but I feel you have to get into the weeds in some cases, like the way minor revision was defined. They, they came along and they said a forty percent, forty, over forty percent reduction in a building was a minor revision. And you have to get, anticipate those problems. And you have to get anticipate those problems, same thing with the uh firing range, they. Classified as being allowed a fine firing range, something that could could have be a sports activity. Or even a retail store as as our date for not. Uh, and I think you have to get, be aware of those things and you have to get in the weeds in some cases, maybe you don't like to get in the weeds, but I. I was a uh, a taxes consultant, we had to really get into weeds and and really, we were. Huge deals that were, uh, if you didn't get them right, by getting into weeds, you would have severe repercussions.
Other comments?
Can I just chime in? I I will say this. Every one of you that wants to get in the weeds will have an opportunity to get into the weeds because at some point. And I know we're gonna hear back from the consultant, but Michael Baker is going to turn over the revised zoning ordinance to all of you, and it's gonna come to this body. To go through it as in as deep in the weeds as any of you would like. And then whatever revisions that you come up with. You're gonna send those on in your recommendation to council if if those revisions are made, so. I I I think that you, I think everybody will be able to get what they want out of this, and I think. You'll you as individuals who may not want to get into the weeds won't have to, and those of you that do will have a chance.
Dan, are there any, cause I know we went through a pretty detailed schedule last month as to sort of when the major plot points and different meetings and reviews and things would occur, so. If you're still feeling kind of unsure about where the planning commission fits into that, like I. At least, I mean, obviously, we're gonna still have to talk to Kirsten, the project manager, but like I'd be happy to talk more about any questions you may have regarding that.
Well, uh, I think I'm correct in stating, we still don't know what our involvement is.
What, okay, well, let's, so let's break it down again, um. Right now, we have the open house, the big, you know, public workshop scheduled. That's June twenty-third. After that is really when the bulk of the drafting can even begin. Because, you know, and again, like I said last month, please come, I want everybody to be there, I would love for the whole town to come out, because that's really the goal.
They're gonna be drafting concepts that have been discussed prior to that, as I said earlier. Maybe there's certain concepts that haven't even been brought up.
So, right, so going back to the schedule. The bulk of the drafting doesn't really even begin until that open house, until everybody has the opportunity.
In June?
June twenty-third, yes, um, four days, so a couple different, you know, windows of time for people to come in and out anyway. Um, so. At that point, the planning commission with ample time before you have to make a recommendation, and that's commitment that we made at the last. Month's discussion and which I do think is extremely important, you're all gonna get. Ample time to review down to the last comment period, what's in that code as the first crack. That doesn't mean that that's the form that, you know, it has to stay, if something is excluded. There's an opportunity to make those comments to still see what comes out of that drafting process. Um, that probably will occur around, I would guess, September. Uh, maybe October, just depending on, you know, the flow of the project. Um, that is well in advance of when town council would be doing their public hearing and adoption consideration. Which is more in that December, January timeframe, and again, this is separately going to happen for the subdivision and land development ordinance portion as well. Um, so. You know, like, like you've said. At that point, everybody, I mean, that's when I'm going to see the draft as well. And as Carolyn mentioned on the call, they have a plan to give you major sections instead of just throw the whole thing at you. God forbid it ends up being three hundred pages again, you're not gonna get three hundred pages dropped on your desk, and we're talking about it today, and that's the end of that. Um, regarding the planning commission's input and in, you know, the concepts, the foundations, the purpose of the plan. I would imagine that the starting point would be the comprehensive plan that came through the planning commission and was reviewed. And recommended by the planning commission, that's really the foundation, as I, you know, it said for this whole thing, but also.
Recommended by nobody on this commission, by the way.
I think you were.
No.
You weren't on the, okay.
No.
Were you on in twenty nineteen?
I was not, the planning commission was a fait accompli, or the comprehensive code was a fait accompli when I came on.
Okay, so it was already mostly drafted, so. Point being. Something else that I have tried to prioritize in the two odd years that I've been here is listening to what comes up at these meetings, listening to what's really important to the town council members. The planning commission members, just general residents. And really trying to make sure that that made it into the RFP, that I've passed along all of the comments that I've solicited from all of you. Over these couple of years as to what works and what really doesn't. And those are the things that we've tried to really highlight every time that we've had a project management meeting, because that's what I'm hearing. So, you know, of course, everybody's input continues to be welcome, if there's a concept that you think might get left out, please send it to me. You know, tomorrow morning, I'll forward it straight to them and we'll make sure that it's an important point of discussion, but that's something that I've tried to do. Throughout the time that we've been moving towards this project, and I I hope that it comes through in drafts.
I guess that's the the, one of the questions I have in terms of the input. You know, in that. And this may be a personal view of mine, and I don't think that my view of. Zoning or or what I foresee or I like in McCandless is superior to anyone else. Such that my position here as a. Volunteer on a planning commission gives me priority over somebody else. So to me, I guess I see a higher level of a planning commission being if the planning commission wants to get involved, it should be. Principles that the planning commission wants to see, you know, the planning commission wants to see A, B, C, D, and E addressed. Versus. I as an individual have my own views of, you know, I'm gonna carve up the world and I want this R one, I don't want a C eight anymore. Uh, where we may disagree on that, and that to me isn't something that. Should be the planning commission's vehicle, it should just be you individually such that. The planning commission should be, well, it could be any level of detail that we all agree to, but I suspect we're probably not going to all agree on. A lot of things because we all have different viewpoints, so that to me is is where I see the difference between the planning commission acting. And you know, formally in the process through the name of the planning commission versus just. Individual members of planning commission because we like this kind of thing, we're interested in it, we deal with it on a day to day basis, saying. RJ or Shelley, here's, here's kind of my list, can you just pass these on to the right chat, which. I mean, to me, I've not seen an impediment to do that, whether, yeah, in Greg's case of getting into the weeds and doing all that or just. Two or three higher level bullet points. It's just, you know, to me, it's, we're individuals sitting on the planning commission, so do we as individuals want. A seat at the table as individuals, or are we doing this from a collective sense of, hey, we as a planning commission are protecting our turf? And this is what we collectively all agree on and want to do. Because I think that the former is much easier than the latter.
I I I think you have to, although you have to look at the language of of a statute. You have to say, well, what if, what if this is interpreted. Uh, one way or the other, and and so you you anticipate it being misinterpreted. And add some caution language, uh, likes, does not include shooting ranges. And stuff like that, or or heavy weapons or something like, just to pick on the firing range for a second, uh. I I think you have to put, point those things out, or or else you get troubles, trouble down the road. If you don't.
But I think we'll have that opportunity.
Yeah, well.
I think Brandon's point is that if you individually have things to um that you want to do, do them individually. But the planning commission should decide as a body what it's gonna do and do that thing. And if you want to do something different, then you do the rest of your thing individually. Is that what you're saying?
I think that's a very accurate summation.
Thank you, I'm a bottom line kind of girl.
I'm a lawyer, so I have to go around it.
That's the difference, so I think that's what Brandon's saying, he's saying, can this body agree collectively, we're gonna do one and two? And then if anyone wants to do more than that, it's not coming from the planning commission, it's coming from you as an individual.
Well, that that individual should point out to the planning commission what what it, what it means if they go down that road. That's, that's what I'm saying.
That's what they would be side decided if they want.
Yeah, but someone has, someone has to point that out.
I just don't know that we have any work product to to. Get a lot of these things from a sense of the planning commission is is really what it comes down to, because, I mean, part of it, I think you're right, Dan, it's just. There's nothing there to know, but at the same time, I don't know that I go to Michael Baker's office. Uh, and that there's anything there either, it's it's just an information gathering system, so.
Well, it it sounds like until June, there's really not much of anything. Until the workshop. That there really is, there's, there's not even a draft document for us.
Right.
There's, there's nothing tangible. So. From my viewpoint. I I think there, whether it's the workshop or through RJ or through McCandless, I mean, there there are opportunities for all of us to provide our. Our individual input. As to things we would like to see um. In in the revised ordinance, things we don't want to see and go all in the weeds as we'd like with with those suggestions. Um, my concern, um, as far as timeline is, I understand we're gonna see a draft in in September, October, hopefully we'll see draft. Components before that, and I understand, I can see it before June because there isn't anything. But hopefully in July, August, we start to see some pieces, because. My concern is we get to the point and maybe what we see in September is is a wonderfully crafted document that has very few comments, very few revisions. They're easy for for Michael Baker to incorporate, and then we're we're on to, you know, proving that document. Sending it off to town council. But my concern is we get to September, we see a document, maybe most of those pieces for the first time, and we go, whoa, there's, we have lots of. Concerns here, that this is, you know, we have a laundry list of of like Dan's comments on. Of, you know, shifty comments here, and some are pretty substantial, what do we do then? Because then we're, you know, trying to compress revisions and and reworking a document, perhaps major revisions into a two month timeframe. That could be a problem, so my only concern is if we, if we're getting things as as soon as possible, and I understand this this stuff takes time. It's, you can't just get it overnight, you know, they have to be able to take the input that they're receiving at the workshop and working it into the document. But if, you know, we don't see something till late October, I'm very concerned that, you know, that's, that's not providing enough time to. Work out any case that that we see.
If I had to guess, and I'm freelancing a little bit for Carolyn, since she is, you know, no longer on the call. Be a very long time for her to hang around to answer this question, but you know that slide where she kind of showed like the the. Definitions, you know, the administrative provisions, the districts, the uses, those are probably the chunks that are going to get drafted. And shown to the planning commission, you know, each at a time, because it just from hearing the conversations, you know, that we've had in project management meetings. That's really the framework that they're looking at it.
And then I guess the the other piece of that last last comment I have for is logistically how that will work when we do see a draft. It's September, October. Uh, obviously, as Brendan kind of alluded to, we're all individuals, we all have different viewpoints, we don't see things exactly the same. And so as far as reviewing the document, providing comments and input. If if one of us sees it this way, but the remainder of the efficiency in a different way, how how are we gonna go about consolidating that into an overall opinion? What should be done and what should be revised? Not an issue right now, but it will be an issue by month, year, and quarter. So I, I don't know, we need an answer to that.
I I can provide one.
Yeah.
I'm super prepared for this, so, okay, so so this is something that, oh, gosh, it was probably. I would have to say the oil and gas ordinance that was the last time that we had like a really major ordinance amendment come through the planning commission. So the procedure I did at that time was collected the comments that, you know, Dan had some really great feedback on several parts of the ordinance. From industry knowledge and things like that, um, you have some great experience on that, you know, from your legal profession. So I took all of the comments that came from different members at those meetings and. Put them into basically a planning commission recommending document for council. Um, ultimately, what gets represented in like my monthly staff reports that I give to them is whatever the majority vote was of the planning commission. However, when we have these major ordinances, which of course this one would certainly be, I make sure to represent. Individual points of view on where council might want to go. So so that, I mean, that's my assumption is that we'll continue to do that for this as well.
Yeah, and I think the only issue I would see there, I think that would work beautifully, I I think the only issue is if. If there's any like directly contrasting points of view.
Well, I mean, that's.
Because they would be listed two things like, we'll do this, we'll do the opposite of that.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't, well, we may have with the overlay district thing, I mean, that may have come up in the oil and gas one, and I I made sure to note, you know, I mean, that was. That that was a strongly held opinion that you had, and. So anytime there's an objection or dissent or whatever, I communicate why that is, because I'm sure council would like to know. Um, so yeah, I mean, it might be a little bit of extra reading and typing, but that'll come through if it happens. Fingers crossed. We're all gonna sing kumbaya at the end.
That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, any other comments?
So you have a sense, seven opinions for every sentence in this to counsel?
Well, I I heard two to three people that weren't into the weeds, so maybe you'll only get four on every sentence.
I'm not into the weeds right now.
Yeah.
When there's a document.
Yeah.
And that to me is is where I kind of see a delineation between my role now as an individual and my role to see. And look through a relatively finalized document and then to say, all right, does this make sense as drafted? And the inputs into that, I personally view as more individualized, where I may agree at this point with Greg that. Definition should be clearer, uh, you know, they should provide more descriptors, uh, specifically itemize things that are not in particular description. Definitions and provide a separate one for something else, I think we conceivably may see eye to eye on that right now. But we may not see eye to eye on the extent to which that is applied further, where he may be more exemplar based, where I may say. I'm okay with that bigger picture, and that to me was the fundamental question of. What is the planning commission's view versus the individual's view, what do we see eye to eye on as a. Commission that is uniform, if anything, and how much of it is beyond that to individual points of view? That's me.
I would encourage this commission as a council member to, everything you send to council is an up or down vote. You support it maybe only three to four, but you support it or you don't support it. It's gonna be extremely difficult for council to get through that with a bunch of different opinions, so. If the planning commission can agree on as much as they can agree on, your job is to help us, not to kill us, so, you know. Um, if you could agree on some things, I think that would be um helpful to us.
It'll save me some typing as well, I did a lot of typing on those oil and.
One of the things that I had hoped we would have had better or more involvement in is the is the vision. Of what we want McCandless to look like. Do we want it to be a bedroom community, do we want it to have much more of a uh. Uh. Urban DC feel, you know, where you've got. The. Form-based zoning and mixed use to activity, do we want it to have affordable housing? Do we not, some people are adamantly opposed to affordable housing, uh, do we want it to be a walking community? Uh, do we want to have numerous trails and and bike paths and things like that, do we not? That that was an initial um determination that I think I would have liked to have been involved in. And I'm afraid that if we don't get involved in this now until the June meeting, God forbid the fall. Those decisions and concepts will have been well past us and behind us, uh, those were the, those were the give and take. Uh, ideas and discussions that I had hoped to be involved in, because I would have learned something in those discussions, just because I say. Uh, I want it to be a walkable and biking community and and have form-based zoning. I don't know, maybe somebody could convince me otherwise if we had a heart-to-heart and meaningful discussion, and I was hoping for those levels of discussion. To be involved in. Um, and I thought that would be involved in because I was a member of the planning commission, and by God, the planning commission is supposed to be doing this. But. Was not involved in that, and and that's what I'm, I'm I'm not worried about drafting any zoning. Code, I I could care less about that, I'll let the profession. Code. I, I could care less about that. I'll let the professionals, Michael Baker, do that. I was hoping for a much higher level discussion of where we wanted to see McCannless twenty years from now. What will McCannis look like and what's it going to be and will we have had a say in how it got there? I'm, I'm concerned that that train has left.
Well, I'm going to be honest, nobody's having that discussion because that was the comprehensive plan.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's why you, that's why Pennsylvania recommends that every community. Goes through that process and adopts one of those every ten years. Because that's when the whole community gets to have input on that question, not seven people on council, not seven people on the planning commission, not me. Whole community. So that's what those principles are being based on.
The comprehensive plan to me was rather. Non-specific, so I, I was, you know. For example, the, the transit out here from, you know, I would love if, if the North Hills had the same T system that the South Hills has.
Zoning is not going to do that.
Is somebody having a discussion to see if we can encourage that? I don't know. That, that's the type of discussion that I was hoping to get involved in because to me, that's going to shape McCannis. One item, uh, as much as anything.
Dan, I had that conversation when I was in a different role and. Uh, with county officials and, uh, port authority with respect to a T. Uh, to the North Hills and I, I think I'll be dead if that ever will happen. I'm forty-five, which is for the record.
I also engage everyone above us who has money, um, the same thing. Short line is just begging to have a tea on it, begging to have a tea on it. Can't get any, any tapers.
And then I, not to change gear, but gears, but I will, but I mean, my view, at least as I've always seen it, is the purpose of zoning is to. Implement with the nuts and bolts what the comprehensive plan is, where the comprehensive plan is aspirational and then you actually take that. And breathe life into it through zoning. So I don't disagree with the overall overarching decisions. My view is just a, a role of. Individual or collective authority and not necessarily reinventing the wheel on something that was done with community input. At large because I guess they'll say, who am I to supersede whatever process was done before, whether I liked it or not? I think that there's ways to influence it, but we just did a comprehensive plan and then you kind of wind up with. You know, an election every couple of years, you redo everything and then. Spend a lot of money on stuff that you're never going to use anymore. So that's the end of my general.
This is the horse one for him tonight.
He's, uh. Maybe barely. Alright, um. We need to. Adjourners, I think there's probably the last item, is that it? Can I have a motion to adjourn? So moved by Sean. Second by Greg. All in favor? Closed. We are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.